So, I wonder what bringing spirits is up to.
Seeing how much spirit is part of it.
Now, I'm curious about this single.
Something you may have seen.
Might have Spotify on. Um, it's, I think, people like Netflix dot com music and has a social component to it.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm pleased to be joined this morning by Ryan Deckert from the Oregon Business Association, Duncan Wise from the Oregon Business Council, and John Malice from the Oregon State Building and Construction Trades Council. Pursuant to Section 12, Article 5 of the Oregon Constitution, this morning I am exercising my authority to call the Legislative Assembly to convene in special session on Friday, December 14th, 2012, at 9:00 in the morning. I do not make this extraordinary decision lightly, but Oregon has an extraordinary opportunity to boost our economy, to create jobs, and to deliver on the central pillars of the Oregon Business Plan: to create jobs, to drive up per capita income back up above the national average, and to reduce poverty in our state while generating revenue to support important public services like education. I've discussed this remarkable opportunity with co-speaker Roblin, with co-speaker Hannah, with Speaker-elect Kotek, with President Courtney, and with Republican Leader Senator Ferrioli, and we are all in agreement that this matter deserves our immediate attention. Nike is ready to commit to a significant expansion of their Oregon operations. Nike's employment in Oregon has increased 60% since 2007, paying an average wage of $101,000, which is roughly twice the state and regional average. A recent analysis by AECom, a global financial services company, estimates that the potential economic impact of the proposed expansion would be over $2 billion a year, creating over 12,000 jobs by 2020, with construction accounting for $440 million and 2,900 jobs alone. This is a huge win for the state of Oregon. The company is seeking assurance that the state won't change its tax rules after making this extraordinary new investment. And to me, that's a very easy call. It is a perfect fit for our strategy to retain and grow companies, to create jobs, to increase per capita income, and drive poverty in our state back down to 10% by 2020. To secure that commitment, I am proposing creating a new economic development tool for Oregon, and I will be bringing to the Legislature the Economic Impact Investment Act for their immediate consideration. This act would allow the governor to enter into an agreement with any company that commits to create a minimum of 500 jobs and make a minimum capital investment of $150 million over a five-year period. Essentially, what we're proposing is simply providing business with certainty that when they make a major investment in job creation and in capital expenditures, the current method of business income taxation can be relied on for a negotiated period of time. For a state like Oregon that has serious budget constraints, this is a powerful new economic development tool that does not require the expenditure of new revenue in order to implement. In fact, it will create revenue by creating new jobs and new revenue for important public services. I want to emphasize once again that beyond the issue of this particular company, this is an important tool for Oregon because we don't have the resources or the magnitude of resources of a state like, say, California or New York to try to woo new companies. This gives us something else, and I would argue something better: a predictable investment climate. Now, why call a special session now? What is the urgency that would compel me to take this extraordinary step? The fact is that Nike is a homegrown company. It is one of two Fortune 500 companies headquartered in the state of Oregon. They are planning a very large expansion. The company is growing rapidly. They have to expand somewhere, and they have to do it soon. And the fact is, they are being heavily headquartered by other states and other locations. But they are prepared to sign an agreement now to expand here in Oregon. They are prepared to commit to a very serious long-term investment in capital and job creation if we can give them certainty on the investment climate for a negotiated period of time. To me, that seems imminently reasonable as a business policy and as a state that still has a 10.6% unemployment rate and still doesn't have the resources we need to be reinvesting in the entire enterprise of public education. Getting Oregonians back to work remains my top priority. Clearly, private sector job growth and job creation will be the foundation for an enduring prosperity, but the state of Oregon has an important role to play by creating an investment climate that will attract and grow the right kind of businesses. That's exactly what we're doing today, and I am hoping the Legislature will act expeditiously on this matter this coming Friday. Thank you.
Governor, why do a special session rather than wait a month when the whole Legislature is going to be here anyway?
As I said, there is a sense of urgency. I would say the bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. This is a very important company to Oregon. It is a company that is growing rapidly, and as I said, they have to make this move as soon as possible for their own internal business reasons. They're being headquartered by a number of other states, but they've said that if we can provide them certainty on their investment climate, they'll sign on the dotted line now, and we want to make sure they stay in Oregon.
Where are they going to expand?
I don't know.
Governor, do you know what the expansion is?
It's an expansion of their operations. I don't know the details, but they're running out of room. You know, the company's growing rapidly. I would give you one other reason that's very, very important to keep that particular company here in Oregon. I can't overemphasize the importance to the larger Oregon business community of having nonstop direct flights to Asia and to Europe. The Nike employees are part of what keeps that flight stable. With an expansion of this magnitude, I think we can really firm up those nonstop flights to Europe and to Asia, which are critically important, not just to Nike but to a whole host of other Oregon businesses.
Was that a factor in Alaska's direct flights to Reagan National Airport?
I have no idea, but I'm really glad they've got one.
Was there some indication that something would happen? Does this have to do with the single sales factor?
Yeah, that's one of the issues, absolutely.
Was there any indication that that would somehow change? I mean, it's been the state policy for years.
No, I don't think there's any discussion of changing the single sales factor, but you know, this is a traded sector state. We depend on attracting these traded sector companies, and moving to the single sales factor, which we began in 1991 and really completed in 2005, has had a huge impact on our state, from Nike to Intel to Precision Cast Parts to Genetec. And I think the company simply wants some security in terms of their investment climate, given that it's a global company. It's making a significant capital investment on the assumption that the current tax policies will be continued into the future. And I think it's imminently reasonable, as part of a negotiation, to give them some assurance that this capital investment is going to be based on existing tax law for a negotiated period of time.
So, what you would be doing in the special session was assuring them that there's, somehow lock it in so that the Legislature, if it decided it wanted to change the tax, couldn't on that particular?
Yes, so the proposed legislation is not a contract. It authorizes the governor and the Department of Revenue to enter into a contract. And the sideboards are, there has to be a minimum of 500 jobs and a minimum capital investment of $150 million over a five-year period. I would look at other factors, particularly the wages of those jobs, because this isn't about creating 500 minimum wage jobs. It's about creating 500 jobs that are going to drive per capita income in the direction that we want it to go. I'd probably look at economic multipliers and other factors, but once that agreement has been signed for a specified period of time, if the Legislature were to choose to repeal or modify the single sales factor, that would not apply to that company for that period of time that's been negotiated in the contract.
So, this doesn't provide any additional incentives? It's not, in a sense, a tax expenditure?
No, there's no impact. This is, I would argue, it's certainly revenue neutral. I would argue that it's revenue positive because if you create another, you know, 12,000 jobs, it's going to have an impact on the general fund. This is essentially a continuation of Oregon's existing tax policy.
Do you have a meeting with Nike scheduled to sign such a contract in the Legislature?
Well, I think I'll make sure that, give the Legislature an opportunity to act first, and then I would hope to have a meeting.
Does the federal fiscal cliff enter into the urgency for Nike on this?
No, I think the fiscal cliff obviously has implications throughout the country, but I think this is a business decision that the company needs to make and needs to make in a rather short period of time.
Do you expect the Legislature to complete this in one business day?
That would be my fervent hope.
And initially, it was said it would be next Monday, and now you're saying Friday. Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, it was basically just people looking at their schedules and when we could actually get a quorum into the building. And, you know, they're going to be here this week. There are, some of them are here this week. I see Representative Greenlick back there. So, I think at the end of the day, it was easier for them to keep their members here at the end of this week.
Was there, I may have missed it, but can you describe specifically what the expansion is, but the magnitude of it is the 12,000 jobs?
The potential economic impact, as estimated by AECom, is over $2 billion a year, 12,000 jobs by 2020, and construction about $440 million and 2,900 jobs.
Is there something within the current tax code that the company is pointing to that's creating some uncertainty?
No, I think the, as I said, you know, in 1991, when I was still in the Senate, we voted to begin to double the weight of the sales factor in terms of estimating a corporate income tax burden. In 2002, I believe, we decided to phase out property value and payroll and just rely on the single sales factor. In 2005, the Legislature made that decision. So, a lot of the companies, the big companies that we have, the big traded sector companies that we have, have expanded and invested here because of that tax policy. Genentech will tell you that that's why they came to Oregon. So, they just want to make sure if they're going to, given the options that this global company has to locate, they want, clearly, they want to stay here in Oregon, but they want assurance if they're going to make this huge capital expenditure and investment that the tax policy that's essentially making it favorable for them to operate here does not change on them somewhere midstream. So, essentially, it's an extension of our existing tax policy. It's simply saying to a company that wants to invest in our state that, yeah, you know something, we're going to give you predictability in your investment climate. If you make the investment based on these rules, we're not going to change the rules on you.
Is there a level of unpredictability because of what one of our colleagues wrote up just recently about this lawsuit having to do with the single sales factor and whether that might force a change in it or cause?
Not to my, not to my knowledge. That issue's never come up in the conversations we've had.
Governor, after Measures 66 and 67 in the past, there were rumblings of Nike and Phil Knight and talk about other companies saying they might move. Do you wish to reflect on the fact that Nike has stayed and have? Measures 66 and 67 had a negative impact on the business?
Not really. I mean, I think there are a lot of factors that companies consider in terms of locating and expanding, and I think clearly, you know, Oregon, for companies like a Genentech or an Intel or Precision Cast Parts, which are other Fortune 500 companies, the sales, single sales factor is a real big deal for them. And so, I think this is simply just a reflection of the interest in being here and the interest of having some kind of predictability of the tax climate.
What other states has Nike indicated that they possibly could choose over Oregon?
They have not discussed that with me.
On the urgency of this, I mean, did they, were you getting indications that they couldn't wait and that they might choose to go to another state if you didn't act as soon as you're acting now?
They, they didn't say, if you don't do this, we're leaving. But what they did say is, we have active negotiations going with a number of states and a number of sites, and we will continue those because we have an urgency to make a decision about our expansion. But if you can give us some certainty in the investment climate, we will stay here in Oregon. And to me, that's enough. I, I'm very glad to have that company here. I want it to stay here. I think it's good for them. I think it's particularly good for the state of Oregon.
Do you anticipate a lot of other companies trying to use this new legislation if it passes, and do you end up creating a tax code where a whole bunch of different companies are subject to different tax codes based on whatever was in place at the time you signed the agreement?
Well, first of all, you, I don't think that there's any chance, or very little chance, that the Legislature is going to alter the single sales factor in the future. It's clearly been of great benefit to Oregon, and a lot of states are actually moving in that direction. But it's a pretty high bar. I mean, the threshold to participate is you have to make a commitment to create 500 jobs and at least $150 million of capital investment in five years. And again, the governor gets to make some, put some sideboards on that. So, for example, I would not approve a company that spent $150 million and created 500 minimum wage jobs. That's not what we're trying to do here in Oregon. So, I think you can, if you, if you think about who is it around here that can meet that, it's a pretty small group. You know, data centers invest more than probably $150 million, but they don't create anywhere near 500 jobs. So, this is a new economic development tool. What we can say is, "Look, in Oregon, if you meet certain criteria, we'll give you some predictability about becoming part of our corporate community or remaining part of our corporate community."
One more question. When did Nike come to you?
It was probably maybe a month, month and a half ago, they began. They told me that they were in this process.
Is the legislation you're seeking specific to the single sales factor, or is it the tax code as a whole?
I believe it's the tax code as a whole. I haven't seen the late -- the bill draft, but I believe it's the current tax code. But, you know, I have to say, by the way, that the shape of this particular bill is going to be determined by the Oregon Legislature. We'll propose a bill draft. I'm sure that they'll have hearings this week, and there'll be an opportunity to really examine the content.
Thank you all. Best time available for everyone here. Thank you.
Yep.